Good evening and welcome to the, uh, to the May 2nd, uh, 2023 City Commission Meeting of the City of Fort Lauderdale. Thank you all for being here. We, um, I'd like to, uh, well, we don't seem to have a lot of people in the audience, so I won't go through the pleasantries of saying if this is your first time at a meeting. So, uh, let us begin by standing and, uh, reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, and all.
Let us please take a moment and, uh, share a moment of silence in memory of those, uh, for whom we care. Okay, thank you. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Commissioner Glassman?
Here.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Here.
Commissioner Sturman?
Here.
Mayor Trentalles?
Here. We have full attendance. Uh, there are no agenda announcements. There's going to be one walk-on, excuse me, one walk-on, a resolution, uh, empowering the mayor to waive all the city of Fort Lauderdale requirements for public meetings to be held and notices to be posted at City Hall and providing for an effective date. We'll take that up, uh, at the end of the meeting. Uh, do we have a motion to approve the minutes and the agenda?
So moved.
Been moved and seconded?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and the minutes and the agenda are now approved. I have no, no one signed up to speak.
None, no cards.
Okay. Are we doing this remotely, this meeting?
No, it's all in person.
It's all in person?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That being seen remotely though, right?
Yeah, it's, it's available on YouTube.
Yeah, but I mean, people who want to speak can't speak remotely, they have to be here.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so, uh, anyone wish to pull any items from the consent agenda item? Uh, Commissioner Herbst?
No.
Commissioner, uh, Vice Mayor?
No.
Um, Commissioner Glassman?
CR3, thank you.
Of course. Um, and, uh, Commissioner, uh, Sturman?
No, nothing for me.
Okay. So except for CR3, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and those consent agenda items are now approved, except for CR3. Commissioner?
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So, City Manager, this came up at my pre-agenda meeting last evening, letter A, transportation and mobility. It was a little unclear what this was actually for or what was actually happening, and then the question also arise if this had anything to do with the flag, um, by, uh-
Being defaced on Sebastian Street?
Yes. They just, folks were asking me for a little bit more clarity because it was a little vague in, uh, language. If you could maybe just explain this budget amendment?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure, I'm gonna ask, uh, Director Rogers to come up and explain what took place. Essentially, there was, um, there was funding that was received and now it's being allocated, and, um, we're doing that via this budget amendment.
Any questions?
Well, no, that didn't really explain-
No, he, he's coming to explain the details.
Yeah, sorry, Mayor, just waiting for the details.
Uh, good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioner Ben Rogers, Director of Transportation Mobility. So Commissioner Glassman, what this is, is for the, uh, for the inclusive flag that was put on, uh, Sebastian Street, um, the city received some private donations before we did the installation. So what we did is we created a subsidiary account to hold that, those funds, and then once the, uh, city incurred expenses, then we moved the money from the subsidiary account to an operating line to offset some of those expenses. So that's what this action is.
So that's just taking the $7,000 and moving it into that account so that you can utilize it?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So, brings up another question because it was also asked, um, what is the status of the repairs to that flag?
I'm gonna let, uh, Ben provide the latest update.
So, right now, we've got some, uh, active investigation, investigations going on with the PD, uh, from some of the vandalism. So, we don't have any, uh, major movement on making corrective actions at this time because I believe it's, uh, being secured as evidence. Um, I can, can confirm with the police chief. But we have received a cost estimate, so that way we know what it would cost to repair. Unfortunately, the cost to repair includes kind of taking all of the elements down and then re-putting them back on, so it's, it's quite costly. It's about $10,000 with the current damage.
Okay. I, I ask because it, it is unsightly the way it is, and I think also going forward, we probably might need to rethink, you know, applications on the street as opposed to some more other sort of marker or whatever going forward. But I just was wondering how long we were gonna let it just sit there the way it is because it really, it just doesn't look good.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll confirm with the police. I know the second ish, uh, second act of vandalism occurred in the last couple of weeks, and so it's relatively recent. Um, but that's also one of the things that I think we're working with the city manager on, on, is determining the future of the application and if we are gonna keep it there or find some other measure for it.
Okay, thank you.
I've already, I've received, uh, $3,000 in pledges to, um, help fix that, and I think we can probably get the balance, uh, in donations, so the city doesn't have to pay for any of that.
That'd be terrific. Thank you, Mayor, I'm good and I'll, uh, I'll move the item.
It's too late. The item's been moved, do I hear a second? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending the City of Fort Lauderdale's fiscal year 2023 final all-funds budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2022 and ending September 30, 2023, as amended by appropriating and transferring funds as set forth in the Commission Agenda Memo 23-0089, amending the City of Fort Lauderdale final fiscal year 2023, fiscal year 2027 community investment plan for the fiscal years beginning October 1, 2022 and ending September 30, 2027, as amended by appropriating and transferring funds as set forth in the Commission Agenda Memo 23-0089, abandoning the George T. Lomeyer wastewater treatment rehabilitation of pre-pressed concrete pipe project and providing for severability on effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and, and the item's now approved. M1, motion approving agreement for plumbing services and maintenance. This is pipeline plumbing services abroad for $1,300,000. Does anyone have any questions? There being none, would someone like to move the item?
Moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes. Uh, moving on to M2, oh, that item is now approved. Moving on to M2, motion approving agreement for the Bayview, Horton, and Riverside Parks improvements, Sagris, Sagaris Corporation, $1,729,478. Um, someone like to move the item?
Moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions with regard to this item? There being none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, that item is now approved. R1, appointment of board and committee members. Um, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the names into the record?
Yes, for the 516, 2023 Resolution, uh, Education Advisory Board, Michelle Knapp, nominated by Mayor Trentalles, and Northwest Progressive Flagler Heights Redevelopment Board, John Quahle, nominated by Commissioner Herbst, and for tonight's resolution, for the Code Enforce, Code Enforcement Board, Donald Ray Carney, uh, nominated by Commissioner Glassman, and that rounds it out.
Are there any additions or modifications? There being none, would someone like- There being none, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
The resolution has been introduced.
A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida appointing or nominating, if applicable, board and committee members as set forth in the exhibit attached here two and made a part hereof. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and those board appointments and committee members are now approved. Thank you to all those people who have agreed to participate and your commitment to our city. Thank you. R2, resolution declaring the city's official intent to reimburse itself from proceeds from the water and sewer revenue bonds, Series 2023-C, Advanced Metering Infrastructure Project. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Anyone have any questions with regard to this item? There being none, please call the roll.
A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida declaring the official intent of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida to reimburse itself for certain capital expenditures for water and sewer improvements by incurring debt, providing for the maximum principal amount of such debt and the nature of project costs authorizing incidental action and providing for rescission of prior inconsistent resolutions in an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and that resolution is now approved. R3, resolution authorizing the director, deputy director of finance, comptroller, and treasurer as authorized bank signatories and prescribing amount of fidelity bond. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Any questions? There being none, please call the roll.
A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida pursuant to subsection 4.01(c) of the Charter of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida authorizing Linda Logan Short, Director of Finance, Erin Kendrick III, Deputy Director of Finance, Laura L. Garcia, Comptroller, and Pamela Harrell, Treasurer, to sign checks for the payment of money by the City of Fort Lauderdale prescribing that such employees shall be under fidelity bond in the amount of $500,000. Rescinding Resolution Number 20-04 and any other resolutions or part of any resolution in conflict herewith and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and that R3 is now approved. We have the walk-on resolution empowering the mayor to waive all city of Fort Lauderdale requirements for public meetings to be held and notices to be posted at City Hall and providing for an effective date. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Anyone have any questions? There being none, please call the roll.
A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida empowering the mayor to waive all city of Fort Lauderdale requirements for public meetings to be held at City Hall and waive all city of Fort Lauderdale requirements designating City Hall as the location for notice postings and to designate alternate locations for public meetings and notice postings and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and that resolution is now approved. Is there any further business at the City Commission? Mr. City Manager, you have any further business? Mr. Spence, is there anything that you want to state with regard to any closed-door meetings?
No, sir.
There being none?
Mayor? May I just wish Susan Grant a happy birthday today?
Happy birthday!
Okay, so well wishes to all of our friends and neighbors of the United Kingdom for this weekend, the coronation of King Charles III. And is there any other exciting things happening the next week?
Will you be there, Mayor?
Well, I'm still waiting for my invitation.
Okay.
Guess it's lost in the mail.
Okay.
Anyway, this meeting is now concluded. Thank you.
Thank you.